I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone tonight to our regular meeting of the Board of Education for Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, all Board members are in attendance tonight and we will begin as we normally do with our open forum. So in accordance to Board Policy 203, a 15-minute time period is set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment of the Board Agenda. Sign-up sheets are available 10 minutes prior to the meeting at the door. I will read the open and public forum rules. Input from students, staff, parents, and community members in major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the Board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the Board. 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet is available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the Board. Only those whose names appear on the sign-up sheet at the time the meeting is called to order shall be permitted to address the Board. Up to five speakers shall be provided, a maximum of three minutes, 15 minutes total, to address the Board unless an exception is granted by the Board Chair. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual Board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told that his or her privilege of speaking has ended. If you have any handouts or materials for the Board, please submit those items to the Executive Assistant Martha Walts. Members of the public should not approach the dais. The Board will not review handouts during the public comment period. Board members shall listen carefully, sorry, shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community but not engage the individuals during their time. The Board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow-up by administration is necessary, the Chair shall request that the Superintendent follow-up on the matter. When the Board Chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, the Board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the Board in its deliberations. We just want to reiterate tonight that the open forum is a safe space for our community members to share their experiences, concerns, and feedback. In this space, we strive to protect First Amendment rights while showing respect for everyone. We would like to ask the community to be respectful, not only in speaking at open forum but also in listening. We, as a community, have an opportunity to elevate the conversation and create healthy spaces for dialogue and opposing views. Demonstrating this for and in our community shows how we can all collectively do better. So, thank you for respectfully sharing, listening, and being engaged in our PLSAS community. Tonight, we have one speaker, and that is Katie Gabriel, and she is speaking to us on the topic of parental rights.
Good evening, Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, and Board Directors. My name is Katie Gabriel. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Savage, and I have two students in the district. I want to express gratitude for your commitment to listen to all voices in our community. As a Board, when presented with a parental rights resolution, you chose to use established methods to gather broad feedback from voices throughout our community. Many of us support you in that approach. I would like to share some concerns that I have about the proposed resolution. While several items in the proposal are already covered by our school policies, state statutes, and federal laws, other items introduced in the proposal seem to target and remove supports for students who either identify as LGBTQ+ or who may be questioning their gender identity and/or sexual orientation. This proposed removal of supports is concerning. LGBTQ+ people exist in our community and in our schools. This is irrefutable. A research brief recently released by the Trevor Project looked at the positive impact on LGBTQ youth when they are accepted and supported by at least one adult in their life, whether that's a parent or caregiver, another family member, or a teacher or school member, school staff member. Transgender and non-binary youth who reported sharing their gender identity and were accepted by at least one adult had 30% lower odds of reporting a suicide attempt in the past year compared to transgender and non-binary youth who were out to at least one adult and were not accepted. 30%. For students who do not find that acceptance at home, this proposed resolution would rob them of the opportunity to find that acceptance and support from trusted adults at school. If one of my children did not feel they could talk to me about using different pronouns and instead found a trusted adult at school who they could share this with, would I feel hurt? Yes, I would probably feel hurt. But could I work through that hurt if it meant increasing the odds that they were coming home to me alive every day? You're darn right, I would. Showing acceptance of people identifying as LGBTQ+ looks a lot like showing acceptance for all human beings. Signs on the walls stating that all are welcome, books on the shelves where they see themselves represented, and respecting preferred pronouns and names are just a few examples that don't take much at all on our part but can have an immeasurable positive impact on students' lives, making our schools a safe, secure, and inclusive environment where they know they belong, which is the future that we are all working towards. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our only speaker tonight, so we'll move on to approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve? By Director Olsted, can I get a second? Second. Director Valdezquez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes 7-0. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and we have items on the consent agenda that are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Tonight, these include our financials, purchase orders that are above $25,000, monthly financial report, approval of school board minutes from September 11th and September 25th, personnel items. Yep, that's all of them. And would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Chair Crosby, I'd like to remove the monthly financial report for further discussion, please. There's three reports included in this attachment.
Okay, so we will be removing Item C from the consent agenda, and let's place that under new business first. Okay. So that will be the new A under new business, monthly financial report. Have to make a note so we don't skip over it. So the consent agenda are all the items I mentioned with the exception of the monthly financial report. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Olsted, can I get a second? Second. By Director Burnick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes 7-0. We have no, sorry, Laker, no, I'm moving too fast ahead here. We are now in the resolution for acceptance of gifts, and this is a roll-call vote, and tonight's acceptance of gifts. Bear with me. I know we have the Lions Club. I remember that. Prairie Lake Lions Club. Yes, so I will list them, the Prairie Lake Lions Club and AED for Community Ed, also school supplies, house source of Prairie Lake school supplies, and NARCAN, $3,000 for the Health Services Department. Can I get a motion to approve? So made. And a second? Okay. Director Burnick and Director Bullion. And then roll-call vote. Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director Burnick.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
Director Valdezquez.
Aye.
And Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0, and thank you. Laker Pride, I'll hand this off to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, Board Directors. Several months ago, we shared a video from our Human Resources Department as our means of putting together a comprehensive recruitment strategy, and we featured some of our students as the main actors of this video. And I will say that not only did this video win some national awards and recognition, but it also has helped us in our recruitment. I believe maybe our last business meeting, Emily Herman talked a little bit about our vacancies, and we're probably sitting at about half of where we were last year at this time, maybe even in a better spot. So it's hard to say no to kids when they're asking you, hey, come work for us. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to share some appreciation for other folks that were in this video, okay? I will say, just in terms of hits, this video caught the attention of all teachers and support staff applicants. It has been viewed over 4,500 times, and it has won that Award of Excellence from the National School Public Relations Association. And last year, we talked about our student actors, and tonight, we're going to show the video again, but I want you to focus on some dynamic actors that we have in-house, the adults, the big kids. And we are recognizing our Prairie Lake Savage Area School District staff who also had roles in the video, and so a big thank you to Brandon Weidman, Rachel McKay, Dan Edwards, Dana Reitz, Katie Jackson, Patty Kane, Angie Sessions, Carrie Birch, Cindy Landhus, Karina Eckert, Takuma Padilla, Heather Pearson, and Maggie De Silva. These are all, I think, worthy of Oscars in and of their own selves. And I just want to say thank you for all that you do in helping recruit dynamic and talented staff to our district, and also have recognition certificates that we'll get to each and every one of you as well. So we'll play the video and put a focus on the adults that are working for the kids.
Oh, there we go. That's good. That's good. Fixed it. Hi, I'm Ethan, and I'm a Laker. As you can see, I work in maintenance. I love to fix things, so this is the perfect job. Oh, and I work here part-time, which gives me plenty of time to work on my other passions.
Oh, yeah? Like what?
I recently just picked up dancing. Not to brag, but like I'm really good.
Hi, I'm Cory, and I'm a Laker. Golden grams or chat?
Golden grams. Thank you.
Apple or plum?
Apples for sure. Perfect.
Salad or carrot?
Do I have to eat a vegetable?
Yes, you do.
I guess I'll have a little bit of salad.
You need more.
More? Oh, no. That's more than I've eaten all year. Okay, okay. Thanks, Mrs. Ricari.
Need a little bit more.
Oh, my gosh. Thanks, Mr. Ricari.
There you go.
A kid just peeped in the hallway? I'll send somebody. These drawings are going so well right now.
Thanks, Mrs. Neely.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Neely, and I'm a Laker.
Hi.
I love spending time with students before and after school.
Oh, that's very pretty.
It's so rewarding to make a positive impact on their lives. They teach me something new every day.
Mrs. Neely, do you like my drawing?
Oh, I love it. It's a lovely picture of your family.
It's a unicorn dragon. I didn't see one at the zoo, though.
Oh, it's really pretty.
Thank you.
What is that?
Ricky's one of my favorite books when I was a kid.
Hi, I'm Devon, and I'm a Laker. Ever since I was a little kid, I wanted to become a teacher. Now that I'm in my mid-40s, now that I'm in my mid-30s, I couldn't be happier I chose this job. I love my students. They're awesome. Can you cut out my age completely?
Like, get along with me and mention it at all?
Yes. Thanks. Can I get back to work?
Thank you very much.
What'd you do this weekend?
I drove all the way to my kid's baseball practice. How about you?
I worked on moving my house.
Sounds very fun.
Hi, I'm Mitchell, and I'm proud to be a Laker.
Seven times five.
My favorite thing about being a paraprofessional is working with kids.
What's your second favorite thing?
Working with such a great team. We have so much fun together.
Students can never find out what we do during our lunch breaks. Ever.
At Prairie Lake Savage Schools, we don't take ourselves too serious, but we do take meeting the needs of our staff and students seriously.
Each role has a big impact on our students. Trust us. We know.
If you're interested in being a Laker, visit our website.
That's when you can learn about our competitive pay, benefits, and job openings.
Can we go to the park? I want to go to the park. Are we done yet?
Yeah, I want to go take my lunch break.
If you're interested in becoming a Laker, visit our website to learn about our competitive pay, benefits, and job openings.
Bill, if you all would like to step forward for your photo opportunity of being such great stars, we're going to definitely do that.
Thank you, and thanks for coming tonight. Don't leave us for your thriving acting careers. Tonight, for personnel items, we do not have anything, and we have no unfinished business, so that puts us at new business, which is, we will begin with our new A, monthly financial So they were the monthly financials from June, July, and August, and Director Atkinson requested them to be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, should I make a motion to approve? Then we can open it up for discussion. Sorry about that. Okay, can I get a motion?
So made.
By Director Bullion, and a second? Second. By Director Olsted. Okay, we can, go ahead. We can open it up for discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. I just, given the fact that three of these were added to our Board meeting, I had some questions about the June report that I would just like to get clarification on from Tammy Fredrickson. So going into and looking at the June report, and looking at the expenditures, I see that our expenditures are $22 million, and you have the breakdowns of salary and benefits at $19 million, et cetera. Can you just elaborate on why, because I'm looking back and I'm seeing expenditures run about $7, $8 million a month, and can you just elaborate on why the expenditures are $22 million for this month in particular?
Sure, thank you. We had, at the end of the month, the way that school finance works is that anything related to the '22-'23 school year needs to be included in your '22-'23 financial statements. So June is going to include all of the summer employment that we had because it's related to the '22-'23 school year, and that is the biggest majority of what those additional expenses are. And if you look year-over-year, it's going to show the same pattern year-over-year. We'll always have additional expenses at the end of June. We also will clean up all of our financial statements, so anything that we haven't accrued will get included in there. Any adjustments that we have to make will get included in there. So it's kind of, as we work through the audit, it's going to get all of the June cleanup work in there.
So it includes all of the employment for June and July for the summer? Is that what you're saying?
So in July, the first July payroll is related to June, so you're always going to include that payroll.
Okay, and you're saying it's comp compared to last year? Thank you for that. And then for the year-to-date general fund expenditures as of June 30th, they were $114 million compared to $107, which is a 7.2 increase over last year. Can you elaborate on that as well?
$114 compared to which?
It says compared to $107 million the previous fiscal year.
Can you tell us what page you're on?
I'm sorry, I'm on, so the June 23 Financial Board Packet, and it would be...
Oh, right underneath. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, page one. Under expenditures.
Yep, got it. Well, as you look at the revenue, when you build your expense budget, you're going to build it according to what your revenue is going to look like, and we had an increase in the revenue. So our revenue, we were projecting, if you look at the budget, $111 million, and the expenditure is $111 million. We actually came in over in revenue, and we came over in the expenditures. To compare it to the previous year, again, it's based on the revenue that we're going to receive, not necessarily year-over-year what is comparable. It's going to be what our revenue is generating according to ADMs and the new funding formula, which also increased.
So I was referring to the expenditures, though. So I can see that the revenue, looks like the revenue was flat compared to the previous year, $112 million compared to $112 million, 879. I'm referring to the expenditures. As of June 30th, we're $114 million compared to $107 million the previous fiscal year.
Correct.
What was the change of, I mean?
If you look at, they're pretty comparable on every category except for sites and buildings. And as we discussed previously, we had to increase our long-term facilities maintenance because as the Fish Point Road construction was done, we looked at the pool, which wasn't in our long-term facilities maintenance plan for this year. So we ended up having to use some of our long-term facilities maintenance, which you're allowed to do. So if you look at comparable year-over-year, the big change is going to be in the sites and buildings, which is mostly the pool.
And so that will shift out of whatever it was planned for?
Correct. Yep, because you have to adjust for those long-term facilities maintenance in the future. So when you look at next year's financial statements, those expenditures will be down because we've already expended them in this...
And how much was that? Total, do you know?
It was, I'd have to double-check. I think we overspent like $2 million. But just to note, we also had, if you look at the previous year's financial statement, we had $1.1 million in restricted capital money, and I think it was $800,000 in restricted long-term facilities maintenance. So the money that we ended up overspending, we actually had in restricted fund balances.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding these reports from Board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0, and we'll move on to the '22-'23 final audit. Dr. Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Crosby, Board of Directors. This evening, we will be sharing with you all our final audit from this previous year. I will turn it over to Executive Director Fredrickson, who will tee up the conversation.
We have Jim Eikten here from MMKR, who is our audit firm. They have completed our audit for the last few years, and he is here to present their findings.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Jim Eikten of MMKR CPAs. I'm here to provide an update on the audit for the year ended June 30th, 2023. Before I open up my comments, I wanted to just be clear that the audit reports that were provided to you, which include multiple documents, including the annual comprehensive financial report and the management report, as well as other special purpose reports, have been distributed to you. They are currently in draft form, and I can kind of go over where we are with the status of the audit as I go through my presentation. First of all, I wanted to share this in terms of the presentation this evening. This is my first presentation for this particular season. My firm audits about 50 school districts, and to be here this evening to provide this presentation does give you some sort of context in terms of the timing of your financial reports. You are well ahead of the curve in terms of getting this audit information prepared and getting it in front of you. So first of all, I wanted to share kudos to that. This is an extensive process that the district goes through to get ready for an audit of this nature, and to be ahead of the curve and be ahead of, you know, most other organizations is kudos to you and your organization. As I mentioned, the audit reports are in draft form. For purposes of my presentation this evening, I don't anticipate any other changes to those documents. They are required to go through an extensive quality review process on my end, which hasn't been completed. They also need to be reviewed completely by individuals like yourself and staff members here, and once that process is complete, we will be issuing final reports, and we'll certainly alert you if there's anything of anything that changes in these documents in a further note. It also, you know, allows for you to, opportunity to provide any sort of questions that you have on these documents. So if you do read them and are interested in getting more information, feel free to reach out to members of staff or certainly myself with any questions of that nature. So I did put together a PowerPoint, first of all. So the first thing to understand is the role of the auditor. It is a requirement in state law that the district prepare a financial statement, an annual financial statement. The district does go above and beyond normal financial statement requirements and prepares what's called an annual comprehensive financial report, which they then submit to the Association of School Business Officials for Achievement and Financial Reporting. The district financial report, the ACFER we call it, is required to be audited by an independent certified public accountant, which is my role in the process. As part of the process, I issue opinions on the compliance of that report with governmental accounting standards. You're also required, as part of that process, to have us audit your internal controls specifically related to financial reporting. We also audit your compliance with various laws and regulations that relate to those financial activities. Probably the best example is compliance with the state requirements for grants, any federal grants that you have. They come with a lot of compliance requirements, and we audit all of those requirements. You noted it there, we also audit your compliance with Minnesota-specific laws and regulations. The Office of the State Auditor provides with us a list of Minnesota statutes that we audit. We don't audit every statute, just the ones on their list. And then lastly, bless you, the last item is the single audit of federal awards. You are required to have a single audit of federal awards if you were to receive more than $750,000 of federal aid, and you do exceed that level. And as a result, we issue opinions on your schedule of awards, your internal controls specifically to those federal programs, your compliance with, again, laws and regulations that relate to the funding in those particular federal awards. And then lastly, any major programs, which is defined by rule, we also audit your compliance with... we also audit your compliance with those requirements. So as part of my audit, I do issue what's called a management report, is the smaller document in that particular set of data points that I gave you. And so I'm going to cover the highlights of that particular document and I'll give you some page references along the way, if you will, if you're interested, as I go through the particular documents. But first and foremost, I mentioned the timing of the audit. We start this audit in June. We come out here in August and complete what we define as fieldwork and then we complete the audit reports and issue them as for this meeting tonight. It is a requirement that you submit them by December 31st. So certainly you're well ahead of the required timeframe for those particular reports. As I mentioned in my management report, we are going to be issuing what's called an unmodified opinion. It is a clean opinion on that financial report. It is the opinion you're looking for as part of this particular process. In that opinion, you'll notice an emphasis of a matter. This particular year, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued a standard on, I'll say, SABITAS, that's an acronym, for subscription-based IT arrangements, which is in essence, an arrangement for a district that might be financing IT arrangements. And that definition can, is pretty wide. But GAZB is interested in school districts, governments really entering into financing arrangements around big IT projects. And they changed the accounting specifically related to that. And as such, we changed your financial report specifically for those areas, as well as audited that you were doing that as well. That particular bullet point didn't change the opinion. I'm still issuing a clean opinion, but it is just an emphasis of, oh, by the way, there's a pretty significant change here in governmental accounting standard. I mentioned the internal controls in the compliance report. There were no findings to report. I mentioned the Minnesota LEO compliance audit. We did not have any findings to report. And then I mentioned the single audit of federal awards, which we were able to issue a clean opinion on that schedule, as well as had no findings. So all in all, my audit report is going to come out with no findings at all, which is tremendous. Exceptional results. I believe Tammy referenced, I don't know how many years it's been, maybe the third, fourth year I've been doing this, but we haven't had, we've had findings in all previous audits. And I've stood up here and said this. I said, the importance of the audit isn't so much the findings, it's the corrective action that the district takes to correct them so they don't continue ongoing. And we have a note in my report about the prior year findings and that they weren't issued again this year. So in all my years, which is very short at this particular moment, but you've done an excellent job of taking my recommendations and really correcting them going forward, which is exactly what we look for in an audit process. So that's exceptional. I'll move on then to the other part of my presentation, which is really the financial results. My management report does provide, first of all, some benchmarking information, some trend information on financial results. The first several graphs, first of which is, let me get your page reference, on page, shoot, page six of that document. Starts with some trend information on statewide fund balances. This particular graph is using percentages widely used in school accounting, which is the statewide fund balance as a percentage of operations, a percentage of expenditures. The yellow bar is really the statewide percentage and the blue line is the district's percentage. Now, this percentage is not the internal percentage that you're using. This is the state's percentage, so please make sure you're clear, or I'm clear, that this is a statewide percentage. You use your own percentage and I'll show you that later. But what we're seeing here statewide is very consistent fund balances. Over the last 10 years, you can see from 2015 to roughly, 2019, fund balances were roughly 20% of operations. That was a very consistent number. Once the pandemic came into play in 2020, you saw fund balances actually increase. The change in the way operations impacted school districts actually impacted financially, I guess you can say, from a fund balance perspective, positive trend in operating costs. Really, costs were less, even though you were being funded to educate those students, costs were down. Now that we've kind of post-pandemic, it's going backward the other way. As costs are increasing, as federal dollars are becoming less available to school districts, you're seeing fund balances go back down. You're also seeing some trends in student population, less students available to school districts, for whatever reason is causing that to happen. I'll get to the district's percentage, but you can see there that the district's percentage has been pretty consistent over that timeframe. You can see, you know, really anywhere from 14 to 16%. There was a blip in 2022 and that has gone down, which I'll show you those results here in a little bit, in the individual funds. My report then on page seven shows graphical, again, presentation, a comparative tool, showing the governmental funds, which is all funds of the district, the revenues on a per-student basis. This shows both statewide and metro area averages, as well as the district's averages. First and foremost, what you stand, what stands out to me in this particular graph is overall revenues of the district are below statewide averages, as well as metro area averages. You can see both in the property tax revenue area, as well as state aids, you're below averages. What that means to the district is you're operating with less available dollars to you, you know, on an annual basis. It's not right, it's not wrong, it's just, that's what it is when you look at the data points. I look at the particular general fund there. You can see that it's $12,783 per resident, or excuse me, per student and the metro area average is anywhere, is about $15,900. So it's pretty significant when you look at the general fund alone. The debt service fund is also a fund that we look at closely. Certainly it shows debt service management. The district has had a recent debt issue, which when that happens, you typically go above average. And as time goes on and you, that particular debt issuance and the amount of debt issuance, you typically see that balance out and go closer to normal. So it's not really concerning to me, it's just, that's the reason for that particular trend line. This particular graph, then, we also take and do this on the governmental fund expenditure side. So here you're seeing this particular presentation, which is on page eight. It's the expenditures per student and as you might expect, less revenues means less expenditures. You don't have the available dollars to spend. So in 2023, the district spends about $13,243 in the general fund compared to a metro area average in 2022 of $15,682. So that's almost, well, 2,024, 300 per student. So it's very significant, certainly in the general fund. And there you can see the debt service fund, the amount per resident is equivalent to that revenue category. Here we're seeing, you know, one of the things you might look at this particular graph, in 2023, you can see that the overall expenditures per student did increase from, what's that, about $1,200, $1,100 per student. Most of that is in various instructional categories. You can see special education instruction is higher. Elementary and secondary regular instruction is higher. Most of that was in salaries and benefits, as well as you'll see sites and buildings is also higher, which was already referenced earlier in the conversation. You're also seeing in the special revenue fund categories, both the food service and the community service funds, do have increased expenditures. But most of that relates to going back to, I'll call it, post-pandemic operations. Things are kind of back to normal, if you will. And you can see that those particular operations are getting closer to consistent numbers that we're used to seeing. So this is a graph, moving on to the general fund's financial position. Again, this is starting page nine, which is really the district-specific information. This is a graph showing general fund's financial position over the last five years, trying to give you some sort of trend information on equity. Cash balances and fund balances are an indicator of your equity position. How are you doing from an equity perspective? And then expenditures just give you some sort of idea on how you're growing or you're increasing overall as a district. So this particular graph, the general fund's fund balance did decrease in 2023 by about $2.3 million. The district did pass a budget that projected a decline of about 300, about 300,000, 388,000. So you're higher than that by about $2 million. Revenues were higher than projections by about $400,000 and expenditures were higher than budget by about 2.8 million. And I'm going to show you those particular graphs here in a second. But overall, you can see really there, that particular graph does show very consistent results from an equity perspective. The district has been very consistent in its equity position. You're financially solid when it comes to the last five years, which is certainly a credit, again, to the overall financial management of the district. This particular graph is actually on the next page, page 10, which gets that same information from an equity perspective, broken down in more number-oriented format. The total fund balance at the end of 2023 was 19 million. You can see the various categorical areas, restricted balances went down slightly. You have significantly less assigned dollars and then undersigned actually went up when you look at that particular presentation to 13.6 million, even though last year was 11.3. The district does have a fund balance policy that you follow, it's a board adopted policy. That particular policy states the district will strive to maintain a minimum unrestricted fund balance of 8 to 12% of your budget, of your expenditures. At the end of the year, your fund balance percentage is 14%. So even though you have a decline in overall fund balance, you are still above the range within your adopted policy, which is a good place to be. And certainly a credit, again, to the financial management of the district to be above those particular fund balance policies areas. Moving to the next graph, I mentioned this, the general fund revenue graph, which is on page 12. There's various categorical areas here, the general fund revenues. This particular graph shows your actual results compared to budget and it also shows it compared to prior year. I mentioned this earlier, the revenues were about 400,000 over the final budget for the year. Most of that was in other revenues. Various other revenue categories were quite a bit above expectations. Most of that is in categories that I would define as generally budgeted conservatively. Things like donations and athletic programs and things like that. You tend to be conservative with your revenues. So that isn't surprising at all that that would be the case. State sources were under budget by about 1.1 million, which most of that related to the student count, to the number of students that you had generating those dollars were below budgeted expectations. You're also seeing in this particular graph, some anomalies or interesting trends in both state sources and federal sources. The state sources were lower than last year, mainly due to the decline in the enrollment. You're seeing a slight decline in overall enrollment, which impacts state sources. But also federal dollars are lower than last year. And most of that relates to, the last few years were significant dollars from the federal government specifically related to pandemic-related aid, which is expiring and something that all districts have had to adjust to when it comes to those particular categories. This is on page 13 of the report, showing the general fund expenditures. And as I mentioned, the general fund expenditures were about $2 million over the budget for the year. This is probably the largest category that stands out in terms of financial results. Salaries and benefits were, the majority of that, salaries were over budget by about 2 million. Employee benefits were about 800,000. Most of that was in instructional areas. Elementary and secondary regular instruction, special education instruction. So when you look at those particular categories that were over budget, almost all of that was classroom-related. Teachers or various salaries and benefits going to the classroom. The district did fill more positions, open positions than they would have, I guess you can say, budgeted. Maybe it was the video that caused that, but I love the video, that was good. But you're also seeing some other areas. Things, purchase services were more than budget, mostly related to, again, instructional areas. Supplies and materials were actually below budget, about 700,000, probably in that category showing overall control over those particular categories. Overall, the district did see expenditures increased by about $8 million. And again, most of that was in salaries and benefits. Maybe not most, 2.9 million in salaries, 900,000 in benefits. You're seeing in those particular categories, a combination of, again, employee contract improvements, which are typical of any particular year, and just increased staffing levels, which maybe you're blessed in that case. As I experienced my audits from district to district, not every district is experiencing that. Certainly has some financial impact, but certainly good for the kids to have increased staffing levels. Sites and buildings, that was mentioned, was over budget. And you also had some capital-related items. There was a capital lease issued for technology, some computers that were also part of this increased over budget amount. So continuing on, the district does have two other funds that stand out to me when it comes to the food service and community service funds. The food service special revenue fund competed the year with a decline in overall fund balance. Most of that had to do with the food service fund has served less meals than they had previously. Overall, you can see that revenues, or excuse me, expenditures were down as a result of that specifically, you don't serve meals, you didn't use the cost of the meals. But overall, the ending fund balance you see there of 2.2 million represents about 37% of operations, which is a very solid place to be when it comes to overall equity. Community service fund, you can see there that the fund balance increased to 2.8 million in 2023. That was a very positive environment when it came to the community service fund, exceeded budget expectations by about 500,000. So certainly that particular fund had positive results. The end of the year, that fund balance is about 46% of operations, which is again, a very healthy position when it comes to your financial fund balance. And I don't have a graph on this one, and I wanted to touch on this particular fund as well. The district does have a self-insurance fund that self-insures the district. The district is self-insured for medical and dental insurance programs. That particular fund increased about 1.5 million and ended the year with a position equity of about 7.5 million. The reason I bring that one up is that can go up and down significantly depending on claims and information on claims. And it's really been all over the board, I guess you can say, when you look from district to district to district, solely based on just makeup of individuals and health conditions. And so the district, your district, having positive results is certainly a plus. You're at 45% fund balance as a percentage. In this case, it's net physician as a percentage of operations. Self-insured funds typically shoot for 50% fund balance. So you're just a little bit below that expectation. You've been awfully close to where you want to be in that particular fund. So I think that's the end of my presentation and I'm certainly going to open up for questions, but I will summarize, the district was or will be, I will be issuing a clean opinion on that basic financial statement. I mentioned the emphasis of a matter on those SABITAS. The district does issue an annual comprehensive financial report. It's probably 150 pages long, great report. No findings to report, exceptional results. You have a decreasing overall general fund balance, but most of that was in assigned or restricted balances, the actual unassigned went up. And the district's financial department did an excellent job of completing the audit process and getting all the information to us on a very timely and thorough process. So the audit was very smooth from my perspective. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions for me.
Thank you. Thank you for all that information. You stated that you had no findings, but I'm wondering... You stated that you had no findings, but I'm wondering if there was anything that you could share as far as advice for improvement? If there was anything that you did share or anything that you would share?
Yeah, probably the biggest challenge we have, you know, with this particular audit was the changing environment when it comes to salaries and benefits. You know, I can look at the data that you've even seen and you can look at the data as you saw it tonight and you can see there's some variables there that's not the same, it's not consistent. So that's an area that we spent and your staff or their staff spends a tremendous amount of time digging into and making sure that those results are accurate and appropriate. And they did a great job of getting there to get us that information. So that was one of the challenges that you can say. But overall, you know, we probably provide a lot of recommendations, but nothing stands out as significant.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify one number you said.
Sure.
On the community service special revenue. I was listening, but I was watching and I thought I heard you say $500,000 improvement, but is it a one and a half million dollar improvement on that?
I've been looking at the wrong number.
On the slide, it goes from 1.375 to 2.8.
So the community service fund revenues exceeded expenditure by 1.4 million. Yes, I did say the wrong number. So that exceeded budget by about 500,000. So you were expecting, you were expecting that in the budget, but it was more than budget by 500,000. Thank you for clarifying.
I had two questions and maybe Director Fredrickson can also help with this. The drop in the general fund balance, although we're still ahead from the 17 down to the 12%. How much of that was directly attributable to us realigning our open positions and filling those open positions?
We certainly were able to fill more positions this year and we did make some decisions this year around some special ed positions that we added. You know, the board approved some paraprofessionals and a couple more teachers. And I think we added a couple of sections at some of our schools. So we had set aside a reserve or assigned fund balance for that, knowing that if we did in fact have to add positions that we had covered in there. So that was a significant, well, I guess not significant, there was a drop in the assigned fund balance, but we knew that it was there to be used for those purposes.
I kind of remember that, I wanted to make sure I was looking at that number and it wasn't, wasn't over elevated basically. But thank you very much. My next question had to do with the property taxes. You know, we're significantly lower in taxes than, and I assume first of all, the property taxes we're dealing with are only school. They're not the total tax. Now, we are currently not taxing at our total capacity. And furthermore, are we, is that also a direct comparison against other districts that have a tech levy or something like that? Because I'm trying to compare apples to apples here as far as where the money is going and the actual significant drop per ADM on those taxes.
So first and foremost, this is a presentation of revenues specifically for your district. So it is just your property taxes, it doesn't include the city and the county or any other special taxing districts. These particular property tax revenue numbers do include all the 100% of all the levies categories, the referendum levies, the tech levies, all of those levies. To get into comparables, you would have to pull and pull more data is the best way to put it to determine why that is or what the categories are, because there is a balance here between state aids and taxes as well. There's formulas that balance them out. So when you look at this particular number, it's really hard to look at just the property tax line and get any sort of comparable. You really have to look at the total of the two. But even then, it's still below averages. Without even looking at it, typically the answer is referendum. It's usually a referendum, the superintendent's agreeing with me. But I don't know that for sure, but that would be my anticipation if you were to look at it. It's typically the voter approval of referendums from district to district are driving these, the variables here.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting this together in such an easy to understand format, sorry, and easy to follow. Just, I understand that when a district ends the year with their budget, a lot of different factors determine whether you're going to end on budget or off budget. Can you just give me an overall general idea of, do districts typically end on budget? Or is there a variance of 1%, 2%? Like what is typical of what you see?
Sure, that's a great question. So I would suggest, there's two answers to the question relate specifically to each individual area. School district revenues, you were finished about, I don't even know what it is, you're a $112 million organization, okay? That's a big number and you were within $500,000. That is really close. That is exceptional in terms of calculating those revenues. And even you have some variable revenues in there like interest and other revenues that can cause some challenges. But, you know, we anticipate, or at least most districts and business managers anticipate those numbers to be pretty close. On the expenditure side, it tends to be very significantly more challenging. You were, again, expenditure is 116 million and $2 million over. That's not very far off, to be honest. That's very close to expectations. You said on the, was that 2% was the, that's pretty close. Anything less than 2% or within that range is considered acceptable, at least from an audit perspective. When you start getting categories swinging one way or the other, then as you were anticipating, like, hmm, it shouldn't be closer than that. I don't see that to be the case here. I also look for this when I do these audits. When I ask the question, you know, just like you asked the question, when I ask questions like, hey, why is that? And I get blank stares, that doesn't make me a whole very comfortable. I don't get blank stares at this district. I get, I know what that is, but let me look it up. And I get an email within, you know, a few minutes or days, or I better ask somebody else that question. But we're getting very constant responses and good information. It's not real vague, it's always very detailed. And that makes me more comfortable as an auditor, that you can answer those questions and they know the answer to it. You're welcome.
Any other questions from directors? Go ahead.
You had, there was one comment in here about the technology spend. Could you explain that a little bit? And it wasn't a finding, it was simply more or less an observation almost in the?
Yeah, there's two, there was one particular, I don't know if it was on technology, but there is a technology lease that was issued. Maybe it's not even a lease, maybe it was a sabida, but they're equally the same. Anyway, on, for, I think it was for computers. And so that particular category in expenditures causes the expenditures to be above expectations, mainly because there's also a revenue category that comes into play when you record a lease. That was also, would be outside of that particular revenue, it was recorded as an other financing source. So almost a million dollars of your capital spend was related to, the amount over budget was related to that lease. And really that particular category, there's a revenue category that would offset it if you were to, you know, play with the numbers or look at the numbers closer. So that is, I think, what you're talking about.
Yeah, I was, you mentioned it, it wasn't a finding, there wasn't anything wrong with it, it was just a mention. Okay, thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions?
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Bullion and a second?
Second.
By Director Velazquez, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Ecton. We appreciate your time, your team spent in our district. Now we have a strategic planning update with Dr. Thomas.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Crosby and Board of Directors. I wasn't too sure if I should just put this as a super report. I just have it as a standalone, there's not like a big presentation or anything. But at one of our work sessions, we were discussing the possibility of updating our strategic plan. And the conversation was around the possibility of working with Studer Education Group and wanting to find out from the board, what's the feasibility of this becoming a cost neutral? And so I just wanted to update the board that I've had a conversation with Studer Education Group. And based upon the coaching that's built into our current contract, that is typically received from our learning leaders group. We actually have the ability to make this pretty cost neutral for them to swap out those coaching sessions, to flip that to supporting strategic development work. Their strategic planning arc is very similar to what you typically find with like MSBA or other organizations. There are about a three-month window of time that it takes for them to do a strategic plan engagement process. And that also would require us to take on some of the committee work, particularly some of our focus group work, which I know we've done so in the past as administrative team as well as our building principals. So I just wanted to let you all know that my initial conversations sound very promising for us to be able to leverage kind of the work that we've already engaged with, this particular consultant group. And I think they have access to data sets that we would otherwise have to pull through an external provider because they are leading a lot of our stakeholder feedback. So we have data sets already kind of pre-made just in this past year. So I think there's some efficiencies in us doing that. And so if it is the will of the board, what I would like to do is perhaps call, make a request for the executive committee of the board to come together to meet with Studer and just talk a little bit more in depth about what that could potentially entail and then come back to the board with a more full proposal for the board to consider.
I have a question. Is it okay?
Yeah.
You mentioned swapping out coaching sessions. Can you tell me a pro and a con to that impact?
Yeah, so we meet, we have a regular cadence with our learning leaders, which is our principals and our executive directors that meet every several months, every couple, two to three months with Studer Education Group. And it's all around leadership profiles. So what we would look at doing is swapping two or three of those sessions that we have banked for our learning leaders. And we would use those sessions for Casey, for example, to go out with the core planning team and doing, in partnership with Jenny Zunbush and perhaps senior leaders and some principals, bringing focus group data back to the core planning team. And she would work with the core planning team to synthesize a lot of the data to come back with recommendations for the board to ultimately consider in terms of priority areas of focus, goals, mission, all that. And again, a lot of what we have currently, particularly some of the mission work, bless you, mission work and things of that nature may or may not change, but that's something that we would learn more from our community. So those would be the sessions. I do believe that we have established a really good cadence with Studer Education Group as an administrative leadership team. I don't believe, nor does Casey believe that if we were to swap some of those sessions out, that the learning leader group would actually fall short. Because it is also work that many of us on senior leaders continue to carry, particularly Dr. Edwards and myself, that we would continually engage with our learning leaders because it's not a dependent relationship. It truly has become a train the trainer. So we own that proprietary knowledge, if you will, so that Dr. Edwards and I could also fill in some of those spots with our learning leader group. Briefly had conversations with Jenny Zunbush to understand, you know, given her strong history and continuous improvement as well as engaging in strategic planning processes with different organizations, as well as her connections into the research field, similar to what we've done already this year. We could even time card a consultant to help with some of these focus groups if we found that to be a need based upon some of the relationships that she already carries throughout our community as well. So I think we have the bandwidth internally to leverage this to be a cost neutral endeavor, to not bring on an additional cost for strategic planning. So I hope that answered your question.
Good, thank you.
I have a follow-up. I know we have a membership into Brightworks, formerly Metro XU, it's hard to say. Is there something where, I hate taking PD from people in our district who serve our kids? And so is there something where there's alternatively maybe something that Brightworks can offer? If we kind of take some scope from what we currently have away from learning leaders?
Sure, sure. So yeah, I mean, we can look to a Brightworks. And this is not to say anything negative about Brightworks. I don't, I'd be a little bit hesitant to interject another entity into that learning space of leadership that we've already engaged in. Certainly would support the framework that we've launched. I feel more comfortable because we as senior leaders have embraced the Studer framework to be able to lead this among our own teams. I would say that we have the internal capacity. Certainly principals and executive directors can continue to look at Brightworks as something to augment. That's certainly on the table. I wouldn't look at it as a one-to-one replacement. I think that would be Dr. Edwards and myself.
Yes, and I don't, apologies, I didn't mean it to replace.
Gotcha.
I meant to augment, exactly like you said.
I think it could definitely be a supplemental resource as it stands today. They could still be engaging with Brightworks today if we change nothing.
Sure. Both are important.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I just have a question for, you had mentioned meeting with the executive committee team. Would there be, as an alternative option, could you bring this to, could we bring this to a study session so that all board directors could engage in that format?
We certainly could.
Given the importance of the strategic plan?
Absolutely. So my thought was just as a next step to make sure that we are bringing the proper presentation to the work session. That I would do a quick huddle with that. But if the will of the board is just take it raw, uncut to the whole work session and kind of muddle through, certainly do that as well. And again, what I appreciate, and she walked me through their arc of strategic planning and it's really solid. And I know I had mentioned to a couple of you that when we went to the MSBA training about a year or so ago in January, you know, that I went to one of their sessions and again, it's almost parallel to the arc that MSBA does. And it would be something that's already built into a current contract. And I think MSBA is fairly competitive in terms of their pricing because it's a local state association, but it's still going to be an additional cost, you know, into the several thousands. So, so yeah, so I'm open, could do either.
I think it makes sense to go down this path that you're recommending. The question for the board is how to proceed if we want to do a huddle with exec to bring something to the board for a study session or if we skip that step and go directly to study session. So I'll leave that to the will of the board.
I guess my question is, our October study session is dedicated to kind of one topic. So we're looking at potentially talking about this end of November.
Correct.
Is that too long? Can we do a quick huddle with, or we, the exec team do a quick huddle so that by the time it gets to November, we're a little bit farther along maybe, or does that matter?
So that was, that was my intent is to kind of pre-frame, if you will, some of the conversation and what that can look like for the whole board. And I know the exec, the current exec team has some crossover history with the current strategic plan. So it can draw on some of that to say, yeah, we did this in the past. We don't want to go in that direction this time from a, not from a content wise. We don't want to go in that direction this time from a, not from a content-wise, but from a maybe procedural standpoint. So I thought we could iron through some of that so that we have a more robust conversation come the work session with the whole board. I would just say that if we go to the whole board approach, which is totally fine as well, we'll all just be digesting some of this, you know, initially all simultaneously with Studer. Whereas we might be able to get a little more traction on the front side if we pre-frame some of this. So I, I, I think we'll get the same result, just trying to be efficient with time, considering where we're at in, in the school year.
I guess that's my, where I, sorry, Lisa.
That's okay. Is there typically a timeframe of doing a strategic plan that is more ideal to getting community feedback? Like not over the holidays versus the spring versus like, I mean, I've seen a lot of different boards do
Yeah.
strategic work. So I'm just trying to understand that in my mind.
Yeah, I think it's six on one, half a dozen on the other. Director Atkinson, it, it really, I think it's about the authenticity of engagement. I, I don't believe timing, clearly we know that there will be points of time where travel, et cetera, or family coming in with various holidays. I, I would say that if we had this conversation and we kind of frame this up so that by second semester, we're fully ready to engage, we will finish by springtime. And that gives us ample time as a staff to get ready for our rollout. So that come July 1 and really when we open up and welcome folks back in August, we have a big release of the new strat plan. And if there's any kind of branding, you know, marketing, all of that, that's, that's often associated with that as well as we kick off a new multi-year cycle. So I think timing-wise for us and just watching our natural arc of a progression of a school year, I think we got a nice sweet spot of time working to our advantage because we do have a lot of data already, which had, would have typically been a lot of engagement with an external facilitator. But we literally have thousands of data points that we can easily access. That's a lot of that front-end work. Because we partnered with Studer already, they have a lot of our achievement data. They have a lot, we'll be working with them on our academic scorecard. So a lot of that work is going to already start happening. Whether we do a new strat plan or not, that front-load curve is really going to be reduced, which is why I think we can be really efficient, you know, with them. So I think we'll be okay is where I'm trying to go with Director Atkinson.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think if you, if the executive committee meets, I think as long as it's open to the public and it's on the calendar and then I think that that, I would be fine. But it sounds like from a timing standpoint, we could do either, either or. That's what it sounds like. So.
Yeah, I think several of us that were at the MSBA conference, I think it was right around January-ish or so last year. And we were saying, I mean, we could have, I mean, that was kind of a sweet spot of time. We're going to be really, pretty much right there anyway. So I think we're going to be sitting really well. And that's my update.
Thank you. So are we, have we decided how we want to move forward? Any other input from board members?
We want to move forward.
We want, yes, we do. Yeah.
So if I, if I may just clarify, yeah, if I may just clarify, because I didn't bring something here for a formal vote for the board. But, and, and perhaps this can be just a, a thumb of directional support. If we did move forward with the executive committee, just to clarify Director Atkinson's point, and to our public, those meetings are noticed, those meetings are public, anyone can attend. And again, the, the rationale behind that is to, I mean, think about building a house. We can have prefabbed walls made off-site, or we can make everything onsite. My suggestion is that we get some of these walls pre-made so that when we come to the whole body of the board, we have a good frame for what we can do. And then erecting these walls will go much smoother and much quicker. So that would be my ask of the board, if I can get the board's support for direction, directional support, to work with some of the executive committee members to help frame the conversation for a work stu, a study session to come in November. That's, I guess that's my directional ask of support.
Thank you. Yeah, I support that, that direction of work.
Thumbs up here.
Is there anyone opposed to that directional?
Yeah, can we get a verbal? The thumbs is hard to see for people in the audience. So, thank you.
Is there any directional opposition to me moving in this way of, of engaging? I guess that's an easier way of asking it.
No.
Thank you. And then hearing none, that's the direction that I'll go. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for that update. We have no, nothing under policy tonight. That leads us to administrative reports. We are excited to have our student council rep here tonight. Sam Bergen, welcome. If you have any updates for us, this being your first meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Just first off, I'm really happy to be here and work with you all over the course of the year. And any chance I can, I'm more than willing to give insight on student body. As you know, at the high school, we just finished homecoming, which amongst other things frees up a little time to work in their standing committees. Amongst some of those is going to be community service events, fundraising and development for the school. Additionally, we can start working towards a goal that myself and exec have is being more unified this year. Just because that's something we could be more so than previous years. And what that's going to look like is trying to reach out to other clubs around schools, such as our cultural diversity clubs, NHS, JOC, and doing events with them. Because we, you know, we do great things by ourselves, we can do even better together. So that's just something we're going to be trying to do this coming year. So that's kind of my first words, yeah.
Your first update. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for updating us. We like to know what's going on. So it's fun for us to hear. And Superintendent Report.
Yeah, I just want to build off Dan's words, we're better together. And I, he couldn't be more accurate in that statement. So whether it's our students or our adults throughout our community, that is something that I think we all strive for. So thank you for helping lead that effort. And had a great first meeting with all the student leads and look forward to partnering more with you all as we go down this journey together. Just a couple of quick reports here. We had our first early release last two, last Wednesday. And this was, we, we extended professional development opportunities to all of our staff by increasing those early release times to once a month, as you all recall. So thank you so much for that. Know that we are actually measuring the efficacy of these release times by way of some brief exit ticket-type survey data. We will also have a culmination report that we'll share back with the board, just so that our community and, and board knows that these aren't just free days for, for staff to hang around. These are diving in deep. And there's a unique picture of me eating my glasses floating around out there somewhere as I was engaged with our loadal staff on unpacking the units of instruction with our new math curriculum. But I'll tell you, it, it was great to listen to our staff and the vertical articulation after unpacking a singular grade level unit of study for math. And then they all huddle up as their, as their grade level team to really see what it means to them. So I just want to thank our families and the board. Again, I know there are some inconveniences to, to that. But our community is giving our staff the gift of time, which there's just not enough of. That ultimately will lead to a more personalized learning approach, which we all heard from Morris Leatherman is key. So that we understand our students on an individual basis and can really match our instructional practices as adults to their needs. We reviewed student data, again, hyper-focused on the new math curriculum at the elementary. And then we also had additional staff that were here at the service center doing their first aid and CPR recertification. So it's not just school-based staff, it's folks coming up here also for support. Several of you were at our board scholar event. So I want to congratulate the 507 school board scholars who were recognized last week for their amazing accomplishments. And just to reiterate, to be a school board scholar, Prior Lake High School student must have a cumulative GPA of 3.8 or higher. So that's not an easy feat, given everything that our students are involved in. So whether you're sitting up here at the board dais as a student council rep, president, all the activities and jobs and things that they're doing, and to pull up a 3.8, that's pretty impressive. So congratulations to those 500-plus students. Just a couple of our quick sites. Redtail Ridge had an amazing eSTEM day just recently. We had naturalists from the Three Rivers Park District. And this is just a great event that happens each year. They visited to share their knowledge about various topics and held events throughout the day to incorporate eSTEM. So again, banners look great, practice is even better. So we want to make sure that we are bolstering the science components throughout our district. And so this is something that we are really going to begin leaning heavily into K-12. So just some of the topics, we're looking at various weather patterns, predicting weather, plants, reptiles, amphibians, bird naturalists were there, tree identification, and an earthworm study, if you're into worms. So, and Hamilton Ridge also hosted nat, naturalists as well. So again, great, great opportunity. And then also another way that we are just bringing, I think nostalgia of how strong we are from decades of, of folks leaning into this district, resurrecting in partnership with the Laker Educational Foundation, resurrecting our Laker Hall of Fame. After a 12-year hiatus, the Laker Hall of Fame is back. And we just held an induction ceremony two Saturdays ago, I think it was, if I have my times right. It was over homecoming weekend, that Saturday homecoming weekend. And they, the LEF sponsored and hosted that event and down at the Legends. And I just want to congratulate this year's inductees. We have Dr. Megan Brandelin, Tamara Braun Petzel, Dorothy Nichols, Nicholas, Carol Otison, John F. Schmidt, Dave Thomas, Terry Thomas, Ben Wortman, and the 2003 girls' state basketball team who took it all the way to the top. Many of them were there. And I think the funniest comment I heard that night was listening to some of the women reminiscing over their glory days on the basketball team about, you know, who made the most blocks. And two of the women were taller than me.
Wow.
We looked up to them. So that was, I, so they were talking about how they were just shot blocking all night long. So, so kudos to them. It was a great event. And I mean, I'm meeting, you know, folks that I've never met before, but they are clearly legacy leaders throughout our district and in our community. So it was, it was a great opportunity to make some strong connections. And I can only see that event continuing to grow. And just last two things, State of the District tomorrow night, I think from 6:00 to 7:00. That's going to be right here in this room. And similar to last year and similar to the President of the United States, it's kind of like the State of the Union. It's, it's my way to kind of share what's happening in our district and kind of the direction that we're going and our priorities and some of the data that supports that. And just so our community is kind of going along this journey with us. So that will happen tomorrow night. And then lastly, we'll hold our town hall on finance, Monday, November 6. And that's going to be at Prior Lake High School again, in the old lecture hall, just a couple of doors down from the main office, from 7:00 to 8:00. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any administrative reports, Director Herman?
Yes, thank you Chair Crosby, members of the board, Dr. Thomas. I do want to call out, as part of the consent agenda today, we approved Deb Boyk's retirement. And I just wanted to call that out because she has served the district for over 30 years, giving unwavering dedication to the district, supporting all of our teachers, principals, directors. And she's just been an amazing addition to this, to the department and to the district for a very long period of time. And we're going to really, really miss her. And a part of her dedication, she's giving us at least three months to plan for it. So appreciate that she's being, not only giving us that time, but she's working very, very hard to document all of her processes and her knowledge in her head over the last 30 years. So we can successfully onboard somebody to try to fill in for her shoes. We'll never replace her, but hopefully we'll find somebody to, to fill in her shoes. So I just wanted to call that out and thank Deb for all of her service to the district for the last 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair Crosby, Directors, Superintendent Thomas. I just want to honor my ancestors and acknowledge that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other updates from administrators? Okay. Board reports from the table?
I have a few.
Okay. Sure.
We, Sam Oak and I, the Director of Inclusion, were finalizing our list for the Equity Advisory Committee. We had several applicants. I want to thank everybody who submitted a name and application. It was great. And so we'll be finalizing that very soon. And then also very honored to serve with Enrique, Director Valasquez, excuse me, as a legislative delegate for Area 17, which basically means we go to some meetings and go to some more meetings in December. And basically advocate at the legislative level for what we want to talk about in this next year. And so really, really excited to do that. And along with you as well. And really, really excited to, to do that and, and meet people from other districts all over the state to advocate for our kids and our staff. So at the state level. So really excited about that.
Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I wanted to share. I attended the Early Learning Advisory Council last week. And they are growing. And it's always fun going there. They shared with me the future Laker little baby bag that they put together. And I wrote notes. So it's a, they're free with, they have a free welcome baby class. Anyway, and I think there's, might even be a special note from Dr. Thomas and some of them. I'm not sure. But they're just super cute. And I wanted to share, share them. My first committee meeting with them, they said, remember, they said to me, and I said, this is something that'll always stick, that remember that we are E through 12. So don't forget them. So we, we appreciate them and all that they do for our, for our little, our little future Lakers. The last thing I wanted to share was that I attended a legal seminar for educators on Friday with some of the staff members, Director Chuka, and some other staff members. And I will just say that I was amazed at all of the things that have to be reported and kept straight. And I just really appreciate the work of our team members in keeping all that straight because it's a lot.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Any updates here? Okay.
Community Ed. Our first committee meeting was two weeks ago. And they have, by the way, maxed out on kids company. They currently have a waitlist of about 90 students. And that's fantastic. They have 734 school-age students enrolled and 46 preschool-age students. There are community ed classes that we all receive on those booklets. Those are actually doing incredibly well. Total enrollment so far this year is 1,196 youth and 537 adults. Fall Fest did occur on September 18. I know we had some board reps there too. But for, for those people who don't know, Fall Fest is co-sponsored by both Community Ed as well as the Chamber of Commerce. And they honored 130 businesses and nonprofit vendors this year. For upcoming events, we have the famous community Halloween party being held at Twin Oaks on Octo, Saturday, October 28. Please come and have fun with everyone dressed in costume. Admission is $5 for kids aged 1 through 12. And then infants and adults are free. So that's the first time you're going to see adults are free and not kids free. So that's pretty good. They're currently, and I can tell you that we are desperately asking for community members to become part of the Community Ed Policy Committee. We really would like them on, not the policy, the Advisory Council members. We would look for anybody who is interested, who has taken a class or is interested in becoming more involved with the schools in our community. It really is one of those engagement committees that covers just about every aspect of our school district, just because they, they partner so well with other areas. And then I also wanted to talk about the fact that several of us went to the Board Scholar and had the honor of handing out at least half or more of the kids that showed up during lunch for their Board Scholar pins. And many, many, many students, especially seniors, are experiencing third seniors, are experiencing third year in a row of being a board scholar with that GPA, and that is quite impressive and quite an accomplishment. So for those of you who are first or second years, you got one more year to go, and it's a great way to combine those pins and get a really, really good kudo. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. Any other updates?
Yeah, a couple of different updates. We have our second policy advisory committee meeting, committee meeting coming up this Thursday. I missed our inaugural one, was out of state, so I look forward to connecting with that entire group, and, and just seeing how all this evolves and continues to move forward. Very excited for that opportunity, along with Vice Chair France. The second update, Southwest Metro. So we've met and we've had discussions about staffing. Staffing has been a significant subject within Southwest Metro, specifically relating to special education within the Tier Four setting, which is very challenging to fill and keep filled. So Southwest Metro, taking the lead from a different district, has initiated a pilot project, ensure from outside of the country. So we have our fo- first cohort of four individuals who we're sponsoring to come over, and who will be participating as a cohort embedded and have additional support so that they feel engaged, that they realize that they belong, so that they wish to stay here, but then also fill in, you know, for these very essential areas where we have gaps, because the policy at Southwest Metro is, we drive to yes. We do not leave any of our learners on the waiting list, so we do whatever is possible to make sure that we can reach every single one of the learners that have those different needs and who need that type of a setting. I'm eager to see what happens next and how this program rolls forward, and I'll keep on updating you as it evolves.
Thank you.
I have a couple of updates. First of all, I attended homecoming game, and I just want to say kudos to our staff that night, because it was a little crazy. We had our first evacuation, so thank you to everyone who kept our students and guests and parents and everybody there safe. It was kind of crazy, so, thank you. Also, we had our first teaching and learning advisory committee meeting today, and we had a robust group of, I want to count it like 35, if that was correct, 35 attendees of community members, parents, teachers, admins, so we had some great, robust conversations around the new math implementation. Mark your calendar on November 9th, if you are in the elementary, if you have, have an elementary student, you want to learn more about this new math program. There's going to be a family night where you can come in and learn more about the implementation of this new math program. Some other highlights are, we're going to be having a further conversation about A&amp;I and how that looks in the learning environment, as well as the READ Act. And then we had a conversation around gifted and talented, and how that's been implemented in our district, as well as the Spanish immersion program. We talked about it, how it's been successfully rolled out in the high school, as well as the middle school. And then we had a robust conversation around the elementary specialists, and a brief conversation in, on our MNCACs program review. So that was great, so thank you to Dan and Director Olsted for orchestrating that. And we have our next meeting in November, I think it was the 13th, I believe, is that correct? Yeah, so. And those are all open to the public, and they're located over in the Hidden Oaks, Hidden Oaks Building. Last but not least, MEA is right around the corner, and so for anyone traveling or have a little time off with their family, I know we won't have another meeting until after MEA, so enjoy your time.
Thank you. I'll briefly add that Dr. Thomas and I, I attended via Zoom, he was in person at AMSD earlier or late last week, and we did have a, it was a student panel, and we had a Prior Lake Savage student, high schooler.
Anne Farm.
Anne Farm, and she was a panel, one of four students that was on the panel, asked a plethora of questions, a lot around technology, learning style, kind of outcomes of COVID, learning.
In the future of education, like what do they need?
Yes.
And that was probably the most jaw-dropping conversation to listen to as an adult.
They know what they need. That's, that was the biggest takeaway, right? They know what they need, and so we just need to remove obstacles for them to achieve what they need. That was my takeaway. But very fun to have a student on that panel, for sure. And lastly, a quick thank you to Mary France, as I was gone at the last study session and she ran the meeting, so thank you for that. Important dates that were not mentioned earlier, there's a Heritage and Cultural Festival, October 14th at Twin Oaks, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. And then our next study session is not until October 30th, it was originally the 23rd, and got rescheduled, so that's the date change. That brings us to adjourning our meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn and transition to a closed meeting?
So made.
By Director Atkinson, can I get a second?
Second.
By Director Velazquez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 7-0, we can take a quick break and then come back to closed, thank you.